Deal with that. So, Stuart, are you okay to start now? The live streaming and then we'll give it a few seconds for that to catch up with us.
Yes, the live stream sounds now starting and obviously if everybody is muted when I'm not speaking, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so good afternoon and welcome everybody to this Norwich area museums committee meeting for this afternoon. The greater part of the meeting is going to be given over to the committee being briefed on the events over the summer. And what's been happening over the current Covid nineteen situation. Then what the current plans are and there'll be time for questions at the end. So I think if we could perhaps just confirm the apologies we've got in a second, but first off, if we could welcome councillor David King from Broadland, I believe this is the first of these committee meetings. That you were attending, so welcome to you for this.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Okay, Jackie, could you perhaps just confirm the apologies that we received, please?
Yes, Chair, and I apologize if I've missed anybody off. And we've had apologies from councillors Watkins, Clippsham, Easter and Nobbs. And I understand that councillor Wright's not signed in yet and I apologize if he's sending apologies and I need to record this.
Okay, thank you. Nobody knows of any other apologies? No. Okay, thank you. So thank you for everyone from for being here this afternoon for this meeting. Do we have any questions or petitions to deal with, Jackie?
Chair, no, we received no questions or petition.
Great, well, thank you very much. Could I invite anybody who has declarations, even declarations of interest at this stage? No, thank you very much. And we then move on to the minutes. We're looking at the minutes from the third of March meeting. Which my colleague councillor Boujack Colton kindly chaired in my absence. For the people who were at that meeting, is everybody happy to confirm the accuracy of these minutes? Everyone's okay with that? Great, thank you very much. We then move on to, as I say, the sort of main part of this committee meeting where we'll be receiving a briefing on the events. And the response to the ongoing situation across from March onwards. So if I could invite Robin, you leading us on this. So if I could perhaps pass over to you now, Robin, to take us through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll be at various points introducing my colleague Stuart Garner, who's the operations manager for Norwich Museums. And also Dr Helen Lennon, who's the learning manager for Norwich Museums. What we wanted to do was give members, and I should say it's a real pleasure to see members, albeit virtually. We were wanting to give members an update of the sort of impact of Covid on the museum service and operations in Norwich specifically. But also then brief members on some of the mitigation actions we've been putting in place in this very difficult time. Later in the report, there'll also be an update on where we are with the Norwich Castle project. Which, not surprisingly, has also been affected by Covid. But I wanted to just introduce the first part of the report, beginning in section one. By just giving members a very brief update of where the Norfolk Museum Services generally. So as you're aware, we closed all of our museums in line with government guidance on the nineteenth of March. And since that time, a lot of our staff, or pretty much all of our staff, have been working from home. We've obviously maintained essential site checks, premises checks, collections checks throughout the lockdown period. To safeguard our buildings and collections. And certainly in the early stages of the lockdown, a number of our staff were involved in supporting wider county council Covid response. So that included helping to coordinate volunteering in the county. Helping with distribution of food and medicines. And also a lot of our staff were involved in the early weeks and months of lockdown. In making telephone calls to vulnerable people across the county, working in partnership with county and district colleagues. So as you know, as common with a lot of workers in local government, museum service very much stepped up at that time to help with general lockdown support activities, supporting the community. We've also clearly during the time that our sites have been largely closed to visitors. Been doing a lot of work to engage with our audiences primarily remotely through digital activity. But as we'll be talking about in the report and Helen will be talking about this a bit later. We're also mindful that not everybody has equality of access to digital resources. And there are numbers of people in the county in digital poverty, particularly young people. And members will be aware, we've been focusing a lot of our work recently around hardest to reach young people. So we were anxious to ensure that our activity was not a hundred percent digital, but was also providing a means of ongoing engagement for young people who weren't able to access digital resources. And hopefully, members have been following our activities in the museum model e-newsletter. Which is referenced in section 1.4. And if any members haven't been receiving museum model and would like to, please do let me know. And we'd be happy to add you to the distribution list. That's, it was originally aimed at staff actually, as a way of just keeping staff informed about what was going on. But very quickly, it sort of broadened its readerships and I know a number of members do follow that closely every week. So if you would like to see more about what's going on in the service, please do let me know and we can add you to the distribution list. Again, service wide, moving on to item 1.4, 1.5, sorry. Members will be aware that the government announced that from the fourth of July, those museums with appropriate Covid safeguards in place could begin to reopen. And initially within Norfolk Museum Service, we prioritized our energies on reopening our three larger sites. So that's Norwich Castle, Gresson Hall and Time and Tide. And we worked very closely with the county councils health, safety and wellbeing team. To ensure that our reopening plans were planned and managed in a very safe way. We were also following sector specific guidance issued by the National Museum Directors Council. So that was the sort of sector wide museum guidance we were following, along with the guidance produced by the county councils health and safety team. And I would like to put on record my enormous thanks to all those staff who've been so actively involved in all of the hard work to prepare sites for reopening, as I'm sure you appreciate. A very complex task. And it's been really pleasing that we've now been able to see visitors once again in some of our sites. So as detailed in the report, Time and Tide and Gresson Hall reopened initially to passholders and friends over the eighteenth to twentieth of July weekend. And then those sites reopened to general public on the third of August. Obviously, it's not general opening. We are at both of those sites and now at Norwich Castle using a pre-booked time ticket system. Using the Art Ticket website that we have previously used for all of our pre-booked events. So that means that all of the visitors coming into our sites at the moment are pre-booking. Which means we can ensure the management of those visitor numbers because they're all pre-booking against timed slots. So we can control exactly how many visitors are coming in and avoid queuing and ensure that the visitor experience is good. But also that we're very carefully controlling the numbers of people coming into our sites. Clearly, in advance of reopening our sites across the service, we've been doing a lot of work with staff. Ensuring that staff have been trained, that we've made sure we've provided the relevant protective equipment. Those members that may already have been into site will see that we've installed comprehensive signage, hand sanitization dispensers. We've got protective perspex screens at key points, including reception desks. So all the things you would expect to see in terms of a Covid secure visit. And we've obviously been very focused on ensuring that our staff feel reassured and competent about coming back to the workplace. And also for our visitors, their experience is a positive one. And when they come into our sites, they can be confident that they're entering a premises that is very carefully managed in terms of their Covid wellbeing. So as far as Norwich Castle is concerned, specifically item 1.7. We reopened the castle to initially just museum passholders, friends and other key stakeholder groups only from the twenty fourth of August. Again, this is on the basis of pre-booked time tickets through the Art Tickets website. And the castle is currently not yet open to general public bookings. We're now in the search ring and to see whether we need to make any changes. And when we feel it's safe to do so, we will then extend the opening at the castle to general public as well. So the castle followed on later than Time and Tide and Gresson Hall primarily because of the commencement of the castle construction project. I thought at that point, Chairman, I would pass over to Stuart Garner, just to talk members through the detail of the arrangements we have in place at Norwich Castle. And then I'm sure Stuart and I would be delighted to take any questions members had about the Covid reopening situation. But if you're comfortable, Chairman, I'll pass over to Stuart at that point.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Robin. Yes, if we hear from Stuart now, thank you. If at the end of Stuart's presentation, Robin, if you have anything to add further. Perhaps I could invite any members who'd like to ask questions, just to raise their hand. And I'm sure we'll be able to have answers from Robin and or Stuart. But thank you for that, Robin. And Stuart, if we could hand over to you now, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And good afternoon, everybody. Hopefully, everybody can hear me loud and clear. I'll be covering section two of the Norwich Museums report. And just to really expand on some of those bits that Robin has already mentioned. We, obviously, as members are aware, we were already planning as part of our wider impact group to have a situation whereby excluding Covid nineteen, that we would only have a partial section of the castle open to the public because of the construction zone associated with the keep project, of which there is a a plan within the report that members can see, which it highlights in the dark section where that is. So what we were planning for was already a reduced offer and a very different way of working, but also a very different experience as far as entering and exiting the castle was concerned for our visitors. Since Covid nineteen has come along, of course, that's further impacted upon our, the way in which that we can welcome visitors onto the site. And so the biggest fundamental change that we had to make, or the biggest decisions that we had to make was how we could safely allow people within the castle whilst adhering to the compliance code. Which sets out, this is the county council compliance code based on government advice on how you can safely welcome people into public buildings. And so one of the biggest changes that we had was that originally we were going to be using E6. Which is about the one o'clock point of the castle, as you look at the plan, as the way of coming in and out of the castle. We realized that because it's only a single width doorway, we couldn't effectively or safely get people in and out of the building. So we had to look at other means. And so we decided that the only safe way was to have a separate entrance and a separate entrance, sorry, a separate entrance and a separate exit. And to have a series of one-way systems throughout the museum that guide visitors around initially the ground floor only. And so we took the decision to use E8, which is actually has some advantages because it's, as you'll see on the plan. It's quite near the bridge, which means you have a line of sight of it as visitors come over the bridge to see where the entrance is. And then to continue using E6 as the exit. And the reason why we had to initially use ground floor level only was because we incorporating staircases within the museum became very, very complicated. But also, we actually have at this moment in time, a section of work that needs to be completed by the principal contractor of the keep project that actually has split the rotunda in half. And in fact, we've lost the southern end of the rotunda. Because a hoarding has had to go across, which enables for a trench to go in that will carry pipework associated with our new toilets. In what would have been the old cafe area. And that actually has taken out our rotunda staircase. So we can't safely open up the first floor until those hoardings are retreated. Which will be sometime probably in the first couple of weeks of October. And then we're in a position where we could then effectively open some of the first floor to the public also. So we took the decision that we would have this one-way system on the ground floor that could also incorporate weddings. And I'll come on to weddings in more detail in a moment. And as Robin said, we also needed to control the numbers. And so we're using art tickets to do that. And without getting too technical, we were already on a much reduced occupancy or permitted occupancy as part of our reduced just offer because of the number. And without Covid, we were permitted four hundred and twenty persons within the castle or what was left open at the castle at any one time. But with Covid restrictions, that number has reduced down to one hundred and twenty-six. I'm very sorry, it just came up on my screen that my internet connection is unstable. So if anybody's having difficulty hearing me, I'm very, very sorry. And so that's the decision that we took, a series of mini one-way systems. And tickets that could control the number of people on the site at any one time. Going forwards, we are looking to open up potentially the upstairs Timothy Gurney Gallery, the art exhibition gallery. And also a section of the regimental collections, which will be great for the paying visitors. And we've not yet decided on a date in which we will welcome paying visitors to the castle. Because we need to know and be sure that we can take away that barrier, that temporary barrier, the hoarding which is up in the rotunda. So to safely allow paying visitors in and to absolutely ensure that their experience within the museum is to the best that we can offer. Moving on to wedding ceremonies, we actually managed to start doing some wedding ceremonies slightly before we opened to the public or to passholders on the twenty fourth of August. And we're continuing to facilitate those within our Coleman Gallery, which again is marked on the plan there. And so that was great news for the people of Norwich and Norfolk to be able to continue to have weddings. However, it has to be on a very much reduced offer. And so working with colleagues in the registry office, we determined that the only safe number of people we could allow at any one time was twelve. So that would include the couple and then ten guests and two registrars. Which would turn the total number to fourteen, but twelve in the party. And so far, we've had an average of about two ceremonies per day. So some days are busier than others, but as an average, it works out approximately two ceremonies per day. And that has been working very, very well. But that is all from me, so I'll hand over to Robin or Helen, I believe, actually, who will be doing the next section.
So Chairman, if I could just sort of, just do a final addition in terms of that introductory section, if that's okay. I'd mentioned that during the lockdown period, whilst the sites were closed, our staff had been very heavily involved in digital activity. And Helen will be providing some specific examples of project work in that area. But just ahead of this meeting, I did actually request an update of some of the statistics around social media activity. And I can obviously share this detail following the meeting. But I thought members might just like a sort of sense of the impact of more of our delivery activity going online in common with lots of colleagues in the cultural sector. So we've gained around four thousand new followers on social media since February twenty twenty. And at the castle, we've seen something like a thirty-six percent increase in Instagram followers. And across our three Norwich sites, the castle, Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall, we now have around fifty-three thousand followers on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. There's been quite a lot of work during the lockdown period around creating original new video content. Very early in the lockdown, we were very aware of the fact that there was a sort of blizzard of material being released online. Frankly, of variable quality from lots of different organizations and individuals. What we were very keen on doing really from the outset was creating really good quality curated content. And since lockdown started, we've, within the Norwich Museums, published something like forty-seven different videos through the NMS YouTube channel. And some of that, some of those are featured within the report. So later in the report, we talk about the lockdown living room escape room challenge at the Museum of Norwich. That's a really good example of some of that film content in action. But it's also included material for early years as well as for formal audiences. So a lot of new video content being created. And over the period, beginning in March to the end of August, that video content generated around one hundred and thirty-four thousand views on YouTube, Facebook and Twitter. And a view is basically defined as someone who watches a video for at least three seconds. We've also seen in terms of more traditional social media, a big increase in activity. So with some particularly significant achievements. So the Museum of Norwich generated something like a hundred and forty-two thousand Twitter impressions for its picturing the pandemic program of tweets. And that compares, so that hundred and forty-two thousand compares to about thirty-five thousand just before lockdown. So it just shows the impact of some of this activity and indeed the appetite from our audiences for this type of original curated social media content. I think it's also real credit to the teams that they've also been very alert to the need to sort of tailor the social media activity to sort of, to meet the current situation. So some of the most popular posts, again, generated through the Museum of Norwich were a whole series of nostalgic photographs of Norwich in the twentieth century, including a series focusing on key workers. So that's photographs of nurses, shop workers and carers. So I think we've done pretty well in terms of creating good quality content that very much reflects the strengths of the collections and sites. And we've also launched a Norwich Castle blog that launched in June of twenty twenty. And that's seen around twenty-two posts to date. And that's had around two and a half thousand views. So you know, the cumulative impact of all of this is through a whole raft of digital methods. We've been able to engage with not only our existing audiences, but also to build audiences as well. Helen will talk a little bit about, more about that, but also some of the ways in which, as I mentioned at the start, we've also sought to engage people without access or ready access to those sort of digital sources. But I wanted to give members just a flavor of the sort of impact of some of this digital activity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that, Robin, and to Stuart as well. And councillor Price, you indicated you had a question to ask. If I could invite you to ask a question, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. But first of all, I think I can probably speak for the majority of the committee here. When reading in the report about how staff had been redeployed to help with the Covid support that we were giving the community, and I'm sure we'd like to pass our thanks on to those staff members that stepped up at that time. Just, I have a question, but just a small sort of idea as we were talking, which may not be feasible. But just an idea that any kind of shop fronts that may be inactive in the city could provide an opportunity to display some of the wonderful stuff that we have at the castle, which obviously people can't currently see. There are obviously maybe security issues around displaying things in the shop windows. But potentially maybe a member of staff could be in attendance and it could enhance the cityscape and show some of our wares. And perhaps working alongside the bid could be a good idea. My question is, obviously, we were heavily impacted anyway with the works that were going to take place at the castle. And the Covid outbreak has massively impacted the service. So my question really is around the financial impact of that. So I sort of really aimed at Stuart. So obviously, what we've always aimed to do is to provide an excellent service, but at the same time to try to make the service pay as well as it can for itself. And so I'm just interested to know the feasibility of those financial impacts and whether or not that county have received additional funding to support the arts in that respect.
Perhaps I could sort of step in initially councillor Price and thank you for your suggestion about the shop fronts. That's an interesting idea. And just for information, we do have, members may remember the rather wonderful castle model that used to be a really sort of popular feature of the keep, which is now located in Castle Mall or Castle Quarter, as I should say. As a means of sort of reminding shoppers about the proximity of the castle. So that's a very good thought and something we are sort of alert to, certainly. In terms of the income impact, absolutely, Norfolk Museum Service does generate a significant amount of earned income through admission charges, but also through second respend in our retail activities. And clearly, you know, Covid has had a significant, a significant impact on that and is likely to do so for a period into the future. And we don't know how long that will be. Clearly, from the outset of Covid, we have been obviously liaising closely with colleagues in the county council in terms of monitoring financial impacts, but also doing a lot of work around projecting financial impacts going forward. So I can certainly reassure members that the county council is very well cited on the financial implications of coronavirus for the museum service and museums are not alone in terms of council services, whether it's county or district or city services being affected by Covid. So certainly, we have been reporting very clearly what the current and projected impacts are. We've also made an application to the Cultural Recovery Fund, which relates to the additional government funding administered through the Arts Council. So that application has been lodged and we're waiting on a decision for that. So I think what I can say is that we have been very carefully sort of managing the sort of financial impacts. We've been doing a lot of work around projecting the impacts. We've been reporting that through the county council. And we have been making applications where we can for relevant sources for emergency funding.
Okay, thank you very much, Robin, for that. Are there any other questions at this point that any other members would like to ask? No. Can't see anybody. Okay. Just to say, councillor Price, I certainly welcome your suggestion of using shop fronts. I think anything that can increase shop fronts. I think anything that can increase accessibility to what the what what the museum holds, what the the artefacts look like is a great thing. I did have a question regarding the pre-booked timed tickets, which I understood with who, was it art tickets website? This might be problematic, of course, but I wondered, is there any non-digital way of people booking those tickets at this stage?
We are making contact numbers available. So we have had examples. I mean, not surprisingly, we have at all of our sites have people who've just sort of turned up. And I think sometimes that's because people are, there's just so much information out there that people sometimes feel a bit overloaded. So whilst obviously in terms of maintaining that sort of very close control of visitors, where staff do, where members of the public do sort of, dare I say, pitch up, we have been trying to accommodate them. So certainly at Time and Tide and Gresson Hall, where we've had vacant slots within our time slots and members of the public have just appeared, we've normally been able to accommodate them. But we have had examples as well of of members of the public phoning the sites and then being helped to make an online booking. So staff are doing whatever they can to assist visitors, some of whom are not as confident as as others with those sorts of online booking systems. And we have also been, as I say, catering for people who've just sort of appeared.
Thank you very much for that. I think we always have to be mindful, even though we're talking in a Zoom meeting, that there are people who don't have the digital access or the skills to be doing this. So thank you for accommodating there. Councillor Bridget Colton, you had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted, I think the shop front piece of our day is really, really good. But why don't we use the some of the art parcel initiative that we had and get some of the pictures back from that the children and or adults even have made and do a display that way? Because then people can actually see, you know, what a great initiative it has been.
Yeah, it's a very good, very good thought. And as as you say, the the art parcel initiative, which we'll come on to talk about, has been absolutely fantastic and a really good example of us recognising that not everybody has that equality of access to digital resources. So those sort of tangible art materials that went out to to vulnerable young people, absolutely fantastic. And we are, we are seeing some of that work then coming back and looking to curate that. So that's certainly something we'll we'll absolutely explore. Yes, that's a that's a that's a good thought.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Price, was there a question that you were asking there?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I just wanted to throw out that it's excellent to see that that the the service is obviously responding very quickly to the financial impacts, that they're doing their assessments, that they're in close contact with county and that they're actively seeking funding. As a member, I'm actually very interested to to see what those figures are. So I would, my request is that basically can members of the committee be made aware of those financial reports, going back to county, below the line if necessary.
So I was trying to ask, is that possible, Robin?
I mean, we don't normally supply sort of detailed financial information to this this committee, but I'm sure we could provide members with some sort of information about the overall position if that was helpful. I would probably just need to check on the the sort of protocol side of it, though, to be to be honest, without wishing to be obstructive. Thank you, councillor Price.
Yeah, as as long as that's okay, we'll we'll see what we can do there. Councillor Ward.
Thank you. Yes, as we're shortly going to be looking at letting the public back in, I visited the museum myself last week and it's very good arrangements there, but but a very limited offer. And whilst I was satisfied, I think if people have paid the full price, they might not be satisfied. So are we going to look at some sort of reduced ticket for the for the public?
I was, sorry, Stuart, you go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we are indeed. We wanted to wait first and foremost for the the hoarding, which is currently across halfway through the rotunda, to go first because that would further impact the the visitor experience. We are then obviously, as I say, going to look to open up some of the first floor to further make available some of the museum spaces. And we are looking to use the Museum of Norwich pricing structure at the Norwich Castle, which is considerably less. It's about a forty percent reduction on the normal cost. So we we consider the offer at the castle to be very comparable to that at the Museum of Norwich. And so that's the reason that we we took that decision. So it would be a much reduced price for the visitor.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just add, Chairman, that at Gresson Hall and Time and Tide, the pricing post-public reopening is is sort of standard pricing and that's because the the extent of the offer there is very similar to the the sort of normal visitor offer. As Stuart said, at the castle, we were always very aware of the the sort of limited offer that would be in place once the construction work started on the castle project. So we'd already, we'd always expected to drop the admission price to reflect that reduced experience, albeit still a, you know, a really good quality experience. As councillor Ward said, at the moment, the the offer for visitors at the castle is not only constrained by the construction project, but also the the COVID impact. So we're very aware of the sort of quality of the visitor experience being sort of commensurate with the with the charging. So that's clearly something we will keep under review. And at the moment, as Stuart mentioned, because we've got the additional hoarding line extending out into the rotunda, it's only a sort of short term feature, that's further impacting on the visitor experience. So at the moment, with past holders, friends and other key groups coming in, whilst we obviously want to give them a really good quality experience, we're not at the point where we're sort of quite able, I think, to to sort of levy the normal charge for that. So that will be the next stage in the reopening process. But we are very alert to ensuring that there's a good perception of value for money.
Right, thank you very much. Let's perhaps move further through the report and we can break for further questions. So, Robin, unless you have anything you'd like to add, could I ask Helen to perhaps move on to the next section of this report, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. So I'm going to just briefly summarise some of the key achievements of the learning, the Norwich museums' learning team since museum closure, since his section three of the report, starting on page fourteen of the documentation. I suppose I wanted to just kick off by sort of making the point that we were very keen to make sure we took an approach which was focused on continuing to meet our key priorities and our objectives, although the ways in which we could do change quite all the same strategies as as we always have, although the picture in terms of the way that they are delivered and achieved does indeed look wrong. Are the different. Looking at our schools programme, which is obviously a key priority of our work on museum closure, and obviously that came closely alongside schools closure as well. So both parties in terms of this relationship were thrown into a very different scenario to what we were used to. It obviously meant that there was a suite of bookings, all of our summer term bookings and late spring bookings had to be cancelled, obviously due to circumstances completely out of our control. And we almost immediately took action to make sure that we were supporting those teachers who were obviously in a position of needing to continue to deliver curriculum learning to children in their own homes. And we communicated directly with all of the teachers who had already made bookings to the museum or were anticipating bringing their pupils to to site. And we shared with them as much as possible the resources that would be available, so they had ways in which they could engage their children and the pupils through our resources with some of the topics that they would have been using and engaging with on site. So we were proactive in in making sure that we we did that and reached out directly to teachers and were very pleased to receive a lot of very personal thanks and and comments about how how much that level of support had really meant a lot to teachers at a point when obviously they were uncertain about how they were going to be able to continue to deliver their curriculum learning to their pupils. Our communication with teachers then continued but took a slightly different angle, which was, as Robin's already mentioned, we've been creating a lot of filmed and digital content. I apologize if you're having trouble hearing me. So in terms of generating content which saw costumed characters and the other aspects which are very centrally part of our schools programme, rather than trying to guess what we should be providing, again, we communicated with teachers across Norfolk to find out what sorts of resources they would find most beneficial. So we could make sure that the content we were producing as new offer in the summer term was kind of fit for purpose, I suppose, that was absolutely feeding into to what teachers needed and what pupils would be learning. So that programme continued to grow and we shared it through direct mailings with teachers, but also through social media, on the website, through our mailing lists, which are quite robust for Norfolk school teachers as well. We've spoken a little bit at this meeting around digital poverty and it's been something that we've been very aware of as we've been going through the resources that we've been creating. And we've we've taken an approach where possible to make sure that resources and activities don't necessarily rely on a long internet connection or on a access to a to a laptop or another device for an extended period. We're aware that for households that may only have one device but may have multiple children, there's a huge benefit in making sure that a resource can be downloaded or or the instructions of what what the child can be doing can be taken off very easily and quickly and then that activity can proceed. So although it's actually being principally or in the first instance delivered through a digital medium, the actual activity itself isn't wholly digitally reliant. So that's another way in which we've tried to address the risk of digital poverty. Obviously, we've just begun the new academic year and with, you know, great excitement and a little bit of trepidation, schools have started to return and pupils are going back to the classroom. You've heard a lot about how the recovery plan for the castle is proceeding. And in the current situation, we are not able to welcome school groups to the castle because of the restrictions on space. We've also taken a lot of advice, again, from teachers about their 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 own situations in their schools and and the the difficulty or the lack of appetite and the possibilities to take pupils out of their school settings. Therefore, we are in the process of, we are developing a suite of our most popular onsite events as a digital offer. And that will be a a series of resources and of videoed content with engagement, learning engagement built into them, which we will be developing over the coming weeks. The filming and editing of those is is currently underway and we are hoping to have the first of those ready and available for for schools towards the end of this month. So that is a way that we are trying to maintain an offer to schools whilst we can't, as I say, welcome them to the castle itself. And this is becoming a sector-wide approach. There's been a huge amount of training across the museum sector for learning teams in in finding ways to meaningfully engage with classrooms virtually. It's not something that we've ever done before, so it's a steep learning curve, but we're taking advice from colleagues across the sector to do it as well as we can, as well as collaborating, obviously, with our our Norfolk schools. Stuart spoke a little about the ambitions we have for increasing the site recovery and being able to welcome more visitors to the castle. And Stuart and I and Robin, of course, are having conversations about how we might be able to make it feasible for a schools onsite offer to be relaunched after October half term. We're in the very early stages of that planning, but taking again advice from our schools around working with bubble classrooms and their COVID security measures. We're very much hoping that we will have a schools programme considerably reduced, obviously, from what it would normally be. But we're looking for to make very positive steps in that direction after October half term. And Stuart and Robin and I will continue to obviously talk through those plans and and to try and make that a possibility. If I can just run through a few other highlights away from the schools programme, which are all itemised in the report. Obviously, over the summer period, we would normally have welcomed a huge number of Norfolk families to our museums, which again was not a possibility in the museum closure period. And we took an opportunity to convert our summer programme into an offer which was both digital but also actual. And we collaborated closely with Children's Services colleagues in Norfolk County Council, joining up with their focus of attention on six to eleven year old children as they identified a priority area for that age group. And that age group coincides very much with the family audience that we normally welcome to our museums over the holiday periods. So we developed a series of activities and resources directed for six to eleven year olds based around our textiles collections. And one strand of that was actually in following on from the very successful Kick the Dust Art Parcels Initiative, we created parcels of materials, four hundred parcels of materials with a resource pack based around textiles and craft activities for that age group, which are being distributed across Norfolk through very similar partner organisations to the Art Parcels Initiative that I think you've been informed about previously. Another important strand of the summer programme was that the the resources were actually devised and developed by Kick the Dust young people. So we had a working group of young people through the Kick the Dust Project who worked with a community artist. And they actually led and devised the resources and the activities that were then distributed to the Norfolk children. So it's been a really good way of bringing various different strands together and has really allowed us to work in a way which simply would not have happened if we had been working at the museum in the normal way. And another strand of that summer programme were online workshops and that was the digital element of it. And just as a piece of interesting feedback, one Norfolk family who participated in one of those workshops very specifically made the comment that they thoroughly enjoyed it, but they also participated but would not have been able to if the activity had taken place at the castle. So we are actually, you know, it's a demonstrable example of where we're actually able to to work with and to to reach families and people across Norfolk who wouldn't normally be able to actually access their sites. So an interesting anecdote. The Kick the Dust Project has continued to work very hard and and successfully as a key partner in the project, has been central to these. We've provided resources for their residents to challenge isolation and boredom and and other such risks that their residents may be facing. Much water has gone under the bridge over the last few months, but we're now at a point where several YMCA residents, young people, are engaging with the arts award process and they are looking to not only develop the skills but gain the the award and the recognition and the qualification there. And we're also now talking to And we're also now talking to YMCA about the ways in which they're going to be creating a a bubble an equivalent of a bubble classroom for some of their residents, and that will actually be very positive in terms of us being able to re-engage in person with their young people um in the, hopefully in the coming months. Um, the Kick the Dust Project also um has recently worked with um the KEEP Activity Project um Activity Plan. Um, which is just a another thing I will will highlight, which was the Looked After Children Summer School. Um, and this was led by uh Rachel Daniel, who is the Kick the Dust Project worker for Norwich. Um, and she collaborated with Lee Warden, who is the um Engagement Officer for the KEEP Project. And the Looked After Summer School uh again was a principally digitally delivered um activity, but it took a theme of uh adventurers and merchants um and entertainers. And it was a series of resources um and short films um around circus skills um around um adventuring, around all sorts of different things. And as I say, it was a collaboration where the KEEP Project, it took a medieval theme and the KEEP Project team fed into uh that provision for the Looked After Children Summer School. Um, it was only uh held a very short period ago and and since that was held, Rachel's been on leave, so I'm I'm looking forward to her feedback um on how successful that was, but um we worked with partners and our our colleagues in um in the Looked After Children uh area of the County Council um and care leave as as well. Um, and uh to be able to reach the the young people that it was targeted um at reaching. Finally, from me, um just to highlight something that you you may have seen in the in the EDP, if you if you purchase the the paper regularly or look at their website. The KEEP Activity Plan over the summer period was due to um have a very large engagement programme, which would have um taken the KEEP uh uh basically out into the community in all sorts of ways. The majority, if not all, of that that planning and that preparation had to be uh aborted due to Covid and the cancellation of of many festivals and events, et cetera. We were very um glad and uh very pleased to work with um Archant in partnership to use the EDP and the Evening News um to actually reach a large audience by um having four uh four-page um pullouts uh printed into their newspapers uh over the summer period. Um, as again, a non-digital way of reaching our audiences. So an entirely different mode of outreach to what we had been devising. Um, but being hopefully proactive and responsive and building on that existing partnership with Archant. We were able to create a uh a a keep-focused outreach um offer in place of what was going to be that that public um engagement over the summer period. There's more information in the report, um so uh I do encourage you to to read it if you haven't yet had a chance to. Um, but I think that's uh enough from me at this stage, if I can hand back to the chair, but of course I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Helen, for that. Um, thank you to all the staff, the considerable efforts um they've been putting in over what's been obviously a very challenging time. Um, I think we'd all agree that any way of sort of maintaining um learning and school activity is really important. Um, so thank you for your all your efforts in facilitating all of that. Um, I was delighted to see that some pupils from Loughton School had managed to interview the resident knight of the castle, so again, thank you for facilitating that interview. Um, and also just to say thank you for the the really positive responses um that are indicated in the report. Um, as usual, where young people and other people coming into the castle are interacting with the staff, the feedback rates are very often a hundred percent, so. Um, keep doing what you're doing, I guess, is the the thing there. Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions that any members would like to ask either Helen or indeed for Robin? Um, just to say that there were a few internet um connection problems there, I think. Um, apologies if that disrupted anyone's um uh hearing of of what was being said. Um, Stuart Gardner has had to leave us. Um, uh, that was um planned, that that wasn't something going wrong there. Um, councillor Bojek Carlton, if I could um invite you to ask your question.
Yeah, mine is more of a comment than a question. But I just wanted to thank Helen and the team for the fantastic work they've done. You can see all the spiel that they've been doing there outstanding. But also I think we need to thank the uh the lottery as well for extending so that we could have a thousand packs of those art packs put through as well. I think that's really fantastic. Myself and councillor 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 Carlton Gray have been helping free pack lunches and the Norwich Festival gave it gave us fifty art packs. And the amount that the kids were getting out of that and and the looks on their faces when they were getting that was outstanding, so I can imagine that these packs must have really made a difference to the children, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, councillor Bojek Carlton, for highlighting that. Um, councillor Price.
Uh, yeah, just a small comment to reiterate what the chair has said there in respect of the outreach. It's it's excellent work that we've managed to continue what we've managed to do. Um, it's just a really tiny point. I'm sure we were discussing at a previous committee meeting that we were going to paint the hoardings outside of the castle, um you know, in a in a motif that would uh kind of connect to the castle and and the the artefacts that we have. And in my uh brief uh running through the city, socially distanced, I might add, uh I they still seem to be all kind of blue from the uh from the bottom of the mounts. I just wondered if that that project uh has been mothballed or if we're going to do that.
No, chairman, I can um respond on that one. So yes, we do ha- still have plans to uh install uh graphics across the hoardings that um some of the hoardings have gone up, there are more to be installed. And we've got a rolling programme of of graphics going up on the hoardings, including um some uh specially commissioned illustrations produced by a children's illustrator uh featuring a whole raft of historic characters marching towards the castle. So um in addition to that type of information, there'll also be, not surprisingly, sort of thunder credits, uh but also in information about the KEEP Project itself. So uh the hoardings are going up now as part of the uh creation of the new construction compound. I'd say more hoardings are yet to appear. And we do have a a plan in place for all, you know, as as many of those hoardings as possible uh to have uh graphics uh fixed on them. So uh watch this space quite literally. Um, that said, we are having to sort of tread a a fairly careful line at the moment in terms of um messaging around the museum being open, when in fact we're still only taking uh bookings for pass holders and friends and other groups. So um we're we're sort of mindful of uh not sort of overtly promoting the castle being open until the point that we can take public bookings as well. So but uh I'm sure as you as you do your runs, councillor Price, you'll see more and more graphics popping up over the next few weeks.
Thank you very much, Robin. Um, yes, that was something that we'd originally discussed. I think it was in the um December meeting um of this committee, so glad to see fruition on that. Um, Robin, could I perhaps hand back to you if there's anything further you'd like to um and take us through in in terms of the report?
Yeah, thank you. Um, um, I I won't dwell on section four, which Helen's already been talking about, the um impact of the Kick the Dust Norfolk Project, which is our National Lottery Heritage Fund project engaging with young people, uh particularly harder to reach young people aged eleven to twenty-five, but um just to draw your attention to the sort of uh the the sort of statistics referenced in the uh second paragraph of the report, which uh talk about the interventions during lockdown. Uh, and considering the fact that a number of the young people engaged with through Kick the Dust are in those hard-to-reach categories. Uh, I think that, you know, the project team have done a fantastic job with, you know, best part of seven hundred uh interventions involving two hundred and fifty uh young people. And that includes uh a lot of work with uh YMCA uh residents. Um, and that includes, you know, engaging with new YMCA residents uh during the lockdown period. Um, so the Kick the Dust Project uh continues to be really critical for us. Um, and I'm pleased to report that, you know, the team at Beneta adapted successfully to um the sort of new develop uh those relationships with young people. And as uh councillor Bojek Colton mentioned, the Art Parcel Initiative um where we've seen around a thousand parcels of uh resources issued to primarily thirteen to twenty-year-olds uh across the county uh has been uh really uh successful. And I've included in the report uh in section five, a sort of detailed case study of that art parcel project. So I thought members might be just interested to have a a bit more understanding of the um the partnership uh that was involved in pulling that uh art parcel initiative together. But also particularly, I think, the legacy of that. So a a number of those organisations that we've worked with for the Art Parcel Initiative and organisations that we are now continuing to work with. So I think there will be a long-term legacy for that project on the back of what in its own right was a really important and successful project. And certainly, I'm very grateful to the Kick the Dust team and all the other NMS staff that have been so actively involved in making that project uh successful. Um, and I just wanted to, um, the the other main thing I wanted to do this afternoon and and the section six was just give members a very quick update of where we are with the the Norwich Castle uh project. Um, not surprisingly, as mentioned in the report, uh Covid impacted on the um uh project. We were on the cusp of uh uh awarding the construction contract uh when Covid hit. Uh, so inevitably, uh uh that was delayed. Um, and we've now sort of um assimilated, if you like, the impacts of of Covid and have come up with a revised programme um that accommodates the sort of the delay we've already seen, but also reflecting uh the reality that Covid will increase the the length of the construction project because the contractors are having to implement a whole raft of new Covid-secure practices, which adds complexity and and duration. But all of that has been uh uh sort of uh accommodated uh within the 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 contract that we have. Um, and so we're all sort of, I think, uh uh on the same page in terms of uh taking that project forward. So I'm pleased to report, as mentioned in in the in the documents, that we've now um awarded the uh contract for the main build works to Morgan Sindal Construction. Uh, we handed over uh the construction areas of the site uh to Morgan Sindal on the tenth of August, so they now have site possession. Um, and um uh that means that they have effectively control of the zone within the castle that's highlighted on uh in Stuart's report and um we're now sort of retreated behind the hoardings internally. As Stuart mentioned, we have um um uh agreed with the contractor to undertake uh works in the rotunda area. This was work that was always going to have to happen. But we've actually brought it forward, mindful that we have relatively small numbers of visitors in the museum at the moment. So uh this work in the rotunda area is going to be less disruptive than would be the case when we have uh higher numbers of visitors in. So um that work is uh going to be taking place during uh much of September, and that's seeing the installation of the drainage connections from what will be the new toilets created where the previous cafe was located. But if you do go into the castle in the next few weeks and see those extended hoardings in the rotunda, be reassured that they will be removed once that uh that that work has been uh completed. And at that point, the whole of the rotunda area will be uh available to our visitors, including the rotunda toilets. Um, the contractors are now sort of in the process of setting their site up. Um, uh, and we've sort of handed over the site to them, so that includes dealing with issues around uh security and and um access to sites and so forth. Hoardings, as we've mentioned already, are beginning to to go up around the site. And uh the contractors will be creating a new uh hoarded area at the base of the mound adjacent to the lift off of Castle Meadow, so that will be the point at which deliveries arrive. And the next sort of exciting thing to happen, I guess, on the site will be uh the arrival of the tower crane, which is going to be positioned up on the mound uh outside the front of the uh keep, and that's due to be installed probably end of September, beginning of October. They're actually putting in piling at the moment uh for that uh tower crane's uh base. So that will be a really sort of significant feature, and we've already been talking to the contractor about how we can use the tower crane to promote uh the project, because it will be a very large advertising hoarding for us. Um.
Thank you very much there.
And then in terms of the other.
Oh, sorry, go on.
And just to say, chairman, just to finish off the report, I I won't go into any detail, but just to uh make the members aware that in section seven, um we've got um uh some information about some of the other activities that have been happening across the service during lockdown. Obviously, uh there's been an awful lot going on, so it really is just a snapshot. Just to say again, in connection with the KEEP Project, that we have been maintaining uh our um not Norwich Friends Tapestry Volunteers uh who've been uh beering away, albeit remotely, and have um contributed something like fourteen thousand hours of volunteer time, creating not only the Norwich Friends Tapestry that will be a key feature of the uh new Great Hall, but also a whole range of other textiles that again will be a key part of the new uh visit. So um we've been continuing to support volunteers where we can uh throughout the the lockdown period. So that, Jan, was probably the other highlights from the report, but obviously happy to take any questions uh from members.
Okay, thank you very much, Robin. I didn't mean to uh come in prematurely there, apologies.
Um, no, no, no.
For updating us on all of that. Um, yes, I'll now invite members of the committee with any questions or comments that people might have. Um, councillor Ward first, please.
Thank you. Uh, I could ask, Robin, uh, when do we expect the shop to be open? What will that be this year, do you think? And what about some sort of limited food offer from the cafe? Is there any chance of that this year?
Yeah, so with uh retail, um the um we are uh planning for a a pop-up uh shop in the rotunda. Um, so that's during the um construction phase, so uh that was already part of the plan. Um, the current sort of extended hoardings within rotunda sort of prevent us doing that, but as soon as the hoarding line returns to its sort of permanent position for the rest of the project, at that point, we'll be installing a a small retail area within the rotunda space that will be serviced from the rotunda desk, so that will carry a limited range of stock. Um, and in terms of the uh catering operation, um again, in terms of our initial phase of Covid recovery, mindful there are other catering outlets uh in close proximity, that's not something we're looking at immediately, but we have uh plans in place for a pop-up cafe uh in the rotunda. And in fact, we have the the unit itself uh ready to go, so it's already in the rotunda. And at the point at which we're confident that we can manage it safely from a a sort of Covid-secure perspective, uh that pop-up cafe will be offering a selection of uh hot drinks and cakes and sandwiches and and so forth. Um, the intention is to, within the uh castle construction project, is to uh sort of uh have the shop and and cafe areas returned to us ahead of the completion of the the main works in the KEEP itself. So there will be a temporary uh pop-up offer um in the meantime, and then as soon as we're able to, we'll get the the new cafe and shop facilities up and running. I should say to members that at um at both uh well, at Gresson Hall at the moment, we do have the cafe operating uh once again, but on a takeaway service basis. In terms of Covid management, um takeaway services are relatively straightforward. Where you've got eating in, that brings another raft of complexity. At the moment, with the limited space we have available within the rotunda, um it will be very difficult to manage people eating cities using uh seating areas whilst at the same time trying to manage visitor flows through that space. So it's trying to come up with the right balance between um the the range of services that we're offering and at the moment managing that in accordance with sort of Covid uh security.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I've got councillor Price and then councillor King. Um, councillor Price first, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, ju- yeah, just to pick up on that, Robin, I'm sure we've touched upon this in the past, but obviously uh many members of staff that would have been maybe operating in the gift shop or in the um uh the the restaurant area, were, you know, obviously were unable to work during the planned works. Um, I'm assuming that they were redeployed I'm assuming that they were redeployed in the service. So I just wanted to check that. And then sort of leading on from that, obviously with Covid outbreak, it'd be kind of interesting to know if we had, as a service, had to furlough any additional staff. Any sort of impacts on staffing that we've had and how we were bringing staff back into the service.
Yeah, so in terms of the catering and retail offer, those staff are being used in different ways. So some of our catering staff are actually at the moment supporting, for example, the enhanced cleaning regimes that we're needing to do within the castle. And those of you that are regulars at the cafe will know Gareth, who's one of the kitchen catering assistants there. And I was having a chat with Gareth in Norwich Castle last week, where he was working as effectively as a sort of supplementary sort of Covid cleaning support. So that's a good example of where staff across the service, actually, and indeed across the organisation, have been having to work in different ways. And likewise, our retail staff are supporting general visitor services operations. Because the reality of operating the sites, whether it's the castle or Gresson Hall at the time and tide in a Covid secure way, is that we do actually, certainly in the early stages, need additional staff. Because we're having to provide greater sort of monitoring and also providing sort of reassurance and advice to visitors. So on top of that, additional cleaning at the start of the day, at the end of the day, and during the day is also requiring additional staff resources. So we've been able to sort of use our staff creatively and we've got very adaptable teams, thankfully. And across the service, we have had over the lockdown period, some staff on furlough. But many of those staff are now coming back as we reopen the sites. And as I mentioned in the report, a lot of our staff were supporting other parts of the county council's Covid response operation. So our staff have been working very effectively in very different circumstances, you know, both working from home and also increasingly working on site. And we're obviously very mindful of providing staff with support in terms of their wellbeing. And also for those staff going back to site, providing them with the surety about the robustness of our procedures and systems to ensure they feel confident about going back to the workplace.
Thank you very much for that, Robin. Councillor King, I could hand over to you.
So the first part of my question was exactly the same as Councillor Price's. But I did have a second part, which is, is there any plans with museum services to look at the Kickstart Job Scheme? And see if there's any scope to make any apprenticeships available under that?
I'm obviously aware of that scheme. It's something, it's a question I will ask within the county council. I mean, certainly as a museum service, as members will be aware, we've got a really good track record of supporting traineeships and apprenticeships. So normally where there is an opportunity, we're sort of quick to seize it. Obviously, we'd need to sort of understand the implications of it from a sort of county council perspective. But we do have, just on that theme of supporting traineeship and apprenticeships, we have actually gone ahead with the appointment of our intake, this year's intake of teaching museum trainees. So we have 10 teaching museum trainees that started with us in April. And I really feel for them because some of them have not, well, most of them haven't actually been on to any of the sites. So we're doing what we can to support those trainees with a remote offer. And those traineeships are actually being extended to reflect the fact that they've had a more limited experience in the first stage of their traineeship. So we're sort of very committed to supporting training. And certainly I would ask that question within the county council around that opportunity, yes, but I had spotted that as being something we could consider.
Okay, thank you. I understand the trainees have been working remotely or virtually with colleagues. But yes, one does have to feel for them, the timing really was not in their favour there. Are there any other questions or queries on any of the reports? No. Okay, thank you very much, Robert, Robin, Stuart and Helen for that. Perhaps I'd like now to ask, oh, Brenda, did you have a point you'd like to? You're muted still, Brenda?
I'm unmuted. Okay, well, thank you, Chair. As Norfolk Contemporary Art Society representative, I have to go now. But normally I'd be asking about plans for exhibiting contemporary art. But I understand that that is inevitably on hold during the building project. However, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate all the hardworking staff we've heard from on how they're dealing with the Covid crisis. So again, my congratulations and well done. Did you get that?
We did indeed, Brenda. Thank you very much. I think we'd all concur with that. And yes, thank you for being here representing Norfolk Contemporary Art Society. One of our other representatives here is Felicity Devonshire, who's representing the Friends of Norwich Museum. Thank you for your report. Is there anything you'd like to mention or apprise us of? You're muted there, Felicity.
Sorry, here I am. Yes, thank you. The report is really divided into basically five points. And you may or may not have had time to read it yet, but would you like me to go through it? Or should I just point out the basic points, depending on time?
I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to look through it. So if you perhaps just take us through any highlights you'd like us to be aware of.
Well, from the Friends' point of view, the first point is quite important. And that is the voting of our new chairman, and that's Charles Bingham Newland, who was voted in in May. He's an art expert and has enthusiasm for museums. And so we're very pleased that he's on board now and we can move forward to our second, our second 100 years. On that point, we're still going into some arrangements for next year. But there've been one or two setbacks because of Covid and other things like fundraising problems and stuff. But the family trail, which I was hoping to get up and running from strangers, at Strangers and Bridewell, well, Museum of Norwich, had to be shelved unfortunately. I think there was an issue really about children handling paper and cardboard and it was just felt that it was just not the time for it. And maybe we could reintroduce it next, next year or when times are better. We're pleased to say that we're having a lunch at Houghton Hall and our patron, Lord Chumley, has invited us all the Friends to come to that. And that's going to go ahead in May or June. We haven't quite finalized the date in 2021. So that's something to look forward to. And yes, the sponsorship of the Chrome by Centenary exhibition is a big feature for 2021 for the Friends. We're the main sponsors for that exhibition. And it promises to be obviously a huge attraction to visitors internationally, nationally and internationally. So we're very pleased to be part of that. There'll be more about that as time goes by because the castles obviously themselves are going to be promoting it. And we'd like to be alongside them in that promotion. And lastly, really just, we really wanted to promote ourselves in 2021 because we're very aware that our demographic is quite on the elderly side. And we're looking for new members all the time. And we'd like a sort of range of ages really across the spectrum. And we were proposing to have a sort of profile during the HODs weekend. Perhaps not this year, but for our centenary year. And then we'll be sort of in the forum promoting ourselves and trying to get new members that way. So that's about it really. And if I can answer any questions, if anyone would like to ask me anything.
Thank you very much, Felicity, for that. We'll certainly be hearing more about the Friends of Norwich Museum as we celebrate your centenary next year.
Yes.
Certainly worth reminding people or indeed letting people know that this was the first Friends group set up in the country. So there's real Norwich for us to be promoting here. Are there any questions or comments anyone would like to direct to Felicity? No. Okay. In that case, I think we can say thank you to everyone who's participated in this meeting. Thank you very much to the museum staff. We've heard that the efforts have been absolutely sterling. Deeply challenging times, but you've listened to it magnificently. Thank you. And it's really good to hear how much has been put online and that have made accessible to people. Councillor Bojek-Carlton, I'll just hand over to you there.
I didn't have anything for Felicity, but I just wanted to ask, I think it was the last meeting that we had. We had a talk from one of the staff and they were saying about the accessibility to the castle. And that you have your own accessibility group. And I've talked to Norwich Access Group at their AGM the other day, and they would love to be your accessibility group if that is possible. And so can I just put it on the table and just ask, Robin, if there's any way that we could work with them in that way?
Yes, certainly. I'll have a word with my colleague Hannah Jackson, who's the project manager for the keep project. And I know that Hannah's previously been in contact with the Norwich Access Group. And we've also been working with the Disability Collaborative Network around access audits. So I'll certainly mention that to Hannah. Thank you, Councillor Bojek-Carlton.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And that concludes the business of this meeting. So thank you again to everyone for participating in this. And I look forward to seeing you all for our next meeting. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.